Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. I hereby call the City of Harpsville's off here on a work session for Tuesday, day 223 to order. We will start off with the dedication pledge, allegiance and civility pledge. Councilman Matt, if you would, leave us in the dedication.
Yes, Father. Most holy and blessed in God and God among us. Father, it's one smart man that we are humble stewards of the City of Harpsville, coming to stay in these hallowed halls to do the business of the city that we love so much. Father, we ask you now that you would be invited, your presence into this meeting. Father, let us have minds that are pliable and able to see more than one solution. Help us to coalesce and come together on one solution. That's the best for the citizens. Father, also, we thank you for your grace and your mercy and your loving, tender kindness. Father, we ask you now to move on the hearts and minds of the people because we live in evil and tumultuous times. Lord, you know it all. So, Father, we ask you for all these and other blessings in the name of the Son and Jesus, as we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One, two, three.
Our pledge to build a stronger, more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting the boundaries and their people's, and finding solutions for the benefit of our state or town.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Councilman Matt. And that leads us right into presentations. More updates on the budget from our discussion. Get before. Get, please.
So, we have just a couple of days for you guys. Thank you again for that workshop we had last week here. Yeah, gosh, feels like it's walked out again. Part of that, we did have some requests for two items from you guys. We determined that we wanted to look at a $5,000 increase for park maintenance and downtown maintenance. Park maintenance is going to be for our parks around the city, for maintenance and things like fences and fields and whatnot. And downtown maintenance actually goes into kind of catch office and stuff we have for perhaps those, you're looking at the speaker system, that's what we're looking to do for that. So, we wanted to add $5,000 to both of those per $10,000 increase to the budget. The next thing you have in front of you, this was a late request this year, but also we had the same request as Simba last year. PDRTA, you guys operate the bus system that is independent from the city, has requested, you guys have the contract request in front of you, a $15,000 request last year. In our PCC, we used $7,500 back to do that. So, if we were to look at that, we have contingency of 42,489. So, it'd be potentially an increase of 25,000 or maybe $7,500, can be 1,850. So, it's what you guys want to do. I just want to get some feedback from what you prefer with the PDRTA and also the other if you want to talk about that as well.
Well, thank you. The last paragraph of the contract is looking at, and that's just kind of read, kind of figured out.
This is just a proposal. It's not a contract that we're looking at.
You've got some contingency based on amount of funds, like federal, federal funds? I mean, is that a question? If they don't raise a certain amount of money, we'd not oblige to take this.
So, the, it's the same conversation we had last year. Basically, they are in operation and they do try to get as much money as they can. I know they are trying, they had the desire to add another route. That route can happen potentially without this money or not. We have, other cities have contributed as we determined in the conversation last year. We felt like $7,500 was a good amount to kind of dip our toe into this thing. They have not added another route as we talked about, but they are in conversations with trying to get some grant monies for adding additional bus stops, actual bus stops along the routes, which would help the citizens.
Have they given us ridership most previous year versus?
All that would need to be, so if we budgeted for this, we still don't actually have to go in to do it. We could request all that as part of a, before we could sign the contract. So, this is basically just, again, this is not entering into agreement today. This is budgeting if we want to even attempt to do that. And if you, even if you want to do $7,500 again and then increase it later on, you certainly could. But ridership would be part of the request opening before I sign any contract with them.
How the hope, ridership continues to increase, you know, we can do with, need that data.
I would hope so. I would hope so.
Dan, I would like to see us go forward with this because as I explained, I think last year and years before that, people that don't have transportation, they have to get rides to the doctor, rides, you know, I had someone calling one o'clock in the morning to come and pick them up from the hospital because they have a ride.
Right.
And so, we need to do everything that we can possibly do to try to help the citizens with this because it helps them with their shopping, with their healthcare visits and that type thing. So, $7,500 now, I would say good. If we can do more, that would be great if ridership increases. But if not, at least $7,500.
And just to reiterate, they do partner quite extensively with CareSouth and other hospital entities, and that is a primary use for a lot of residents. Something else, just to throw it out there, they did not do this with any anticipation of any type of course reciprocation, but they were part of the, when we applied for our USDOT raise grant, they were one of the first ones that came to the table and offered to write a support letter for it. They want to increase ridership. They want to have a route down Sixth Street, dedicated route. And so, I do believe that they are moving in the right direction. What we've seen so far, PDRTA, their new kind of management has been very successful so far. So, I'll be honest, I am in favor of giving them something. I think that it is prudent of us to find out what is their increase before we actually sign anything. But again, as a budgetary amount, you have options.
Yeah.
And they're, they're really fairly accurate because I pick up somebody that normally rides, PDRTA.
Right.
And they say, okay, it's time for a meeting. They'll be passing by.
They have an app that you can track their buses in real time.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fully comfortable renewing the 7,500 and if we can, if we go ahead and budget the 15 and if we, if we can't commit that, I agree, it's to a good cause and it also, I think, puts us at a support level, commensurate with our peers.
Right.
And the big thing I remember from last year was that they're trying to have a bus go in the opposite direction. We cut away time to 30 minutes, which seems to me will make a big difference in the usefulness of the system. So, hopefully all those things are headed in the right direction and I feel welcome making room in the budget for that because, you know, getting a little bit more information and all.
What would you like us to, because again, this isn't a free vote. I'm hoping this is for a vote for next, next week, for the first reading of the budget. It sounds to me like we could potentially put in the 15,000 to start or would you rather do 7,500 to start?
I'd go with 15.
Go big or go small. And that's rough, and that is for Matt, it's too quick now to be a capital right here. It's going to be 17,049 is remaining contingency. A small amount, but still, still toward it without the receipt of that.
Well, do, do you have any, you know, from the, from the staff, recommendation on taking that much from contingency versus not?
Well, I mean, our recommendations are already in the budget as far as what we have. That contingency was, was leftovers from our recommendations already. So, contingency is potentially fair game.
Okay, don't forget that. I would say in multiple years before, you know, we always strive to have contingency, but there have been multiple years since I've been here where we've had contingency. So, it's okay. I mean, we'll, we'll have savings in the, we'll keep up to talking about it. It is budgeted. We do, I would say, all the departments do very well in trying to, you know, be conscious of their spending, contemplating emergency items or bigger projects that company do. We're coming to y'all and letting you know upfront to get approved or whatever at the end.
It'd be a budget limit.
Correct. It'd be a budget limit. I think it's, if y'all want to proceed with the 15, we'll be up.
Any other comment?
I might see 15.
Well, then we'll add in an additional five, the five, and then also the 15. We'll let dogs trip on that. We're going to be requesting some information.
Right.
And go forward with that before we sign anything.
Great.
Already, moving on, the next part of this conversation, we want to talk about was another item that came up in the budget workshop. And this again is in the enterprise fund. This is general funding to see what we're talking about here, but the leafback. So, as you recall, we did make some changes to the leaf pickup schedule. We requested those items be bad. There was a request from city council members to look at potential purchase of a leafback. We, our staff worked this last week very diligently trying to come up with a solution for that. We have two options in front of you. There are pros and cons to vote. There's also costs involved with vote, as we know. And then there's also a overarching recommendation to make if we do vote with a leafback, a change to the actual yard waste schedule, which would be the instruction of a leafback collection or leaf, loose leaf collection season, which would be five months of the year where we would only run the leafback and bolt pickup. So, I'll explain all those things as we go. But first, we're going to talk about the two different options. Again, we started researching what would be effective, what other cities are using. We came up with a leafback truck, which is what you guys are familiar with, and that's the actual truck we'd be looking at. And then also a self-contained vacuum trailer. These trailers have a leafback, but instead of being attached to a chassis, it is a trailer. They come in different sized containers for the, how much it can hold. We're looking at up to a 30-yard container which can hold about 12,000 pounds. And so, that would be a relatively large container, but it would be a pretty hefty truck to hold. And there's other options, other things that come along with that. This is a breakdown of what each price, lead time, personal costs, annual maintenance and so on. The price, as you can see, for a base model leafback truck, the costs have gone up since we last started looking at these. 285 plus is what we're looking at. A self-contained trailer is going to be combined 240 because we would need purchase an F-350 or 450 and those run depending what they need, the ton factor, 85,000. And then the trailer itself is 185. So, we're looking at 240 cost there. The good news here, and this is where we kind of, this is one of the major inhibitors, what we're thinking, is that they actually are available. Both would be relatively available quicker than we thought. If we were to produce a letter of intent today, for instance, there are, I think, 25 units available of the leafback truck. It could be here as soon as July, which is a, you know, very good days considering last time we talked about was an 18-month build out. The self-contained trailer only takes about 90 to 100 days to build and then deliver. So, that's from order date. So, relatively similar times of delivery. As far as personnel costs, we do anticipate having to add additional temp labor to assist with this. Temp labor for five months, what we're proposing with the leaf collection season is around 15,000 per person. The self-contained trailer is a more labor-intensive operation. So, we were asking for two initial staff there. The annual maintenance cost, we took what we did for annual maintenance on our previous leafback that we ended up selling, and it was around $30,000 a year. That's on the average, what we pulled up. As far as self-contained trailer and truck, we do think the costs will be lower because there's less moving parts. And also, we do anticipate, you know, we have our eyes on some of the material better and that. So, hopefully a lower cost, almost about half as much. But because of the additional cost of labor, annual cost would increase for the operation of $45,000 and $47,500 is what we would budget for it. The, how we would fund this is different from, we would not look at a capital lease. We would look at using American Rescue Plan money. So, we didn't have to burden the sanitation bed with another capital lease purchase. That would be straight out purchased from Harper funds, just like we did with the front lever. If you guys recall, that was the purchase we did when we had two down. The increase in cost, though, we would have to look at potentially adding a dollar fifty increase to offset the annual costs and that is to our bills going forward. Both require about the same cost in the largest case, keeping even. Any questions on these?
Life expectancy.
It's a, it's a tough one. The self-contained trailer, we do think will last a little bit longer. Again, moving parts, it, it's purely, as we've been talking about this entire time, leafbacks don't really matter what you pick up and how you pick up. If something goes in there, the impellers will get damaged. And that is where, at least, especially when you're talking about horsepower, we're talking about the whole plant leaves because that's matured, we'll be seeing, as Harpsville now, it has a leaf probably of a break problem sometimes. The wet leaves, we need a pretty hefty horsepower. That will lift up a brick if it needs to, and that would destroy the impeller. When we talk about the change to the ordinance, you'll see we kind of built in some safety nets for us to give some time if the leafback does go down. But leave, expectancy on these things is about as much as a garbage truck. It's not damage as much. Maybe a little less, probably. I would say less, probably. They say yes. So, two to three years versus the five or seven, we get a really garbage truck on the day. Any questions? Ken, yes, I'll raise your hand.
Yeah, I think I have another question, too. So, all the funding would come out of the opera funds, current opera funds.
Need to purchase the, the trucks and trailers themselves. We suggest we do it out of Harper funds because, again, if you recall, this is an enterprise fund. This is not, this is separate funding. Municipal funding, you don't use general funds, apply things for enterprise fund. We can't code legal funds like that. So, we would need to utilize funding that's available to everyone, which is the Harper funding, purchase things outright and not until we have a lease to incur financial debt onto the sanitation fund. Because as we talked about before, with the dollar increase, we were talking about last, the budget workshop, we need to deal with sustained operations and costs, and costs are continually rising, but our fees are not. So, we have to look at how we can offset those costs by going to the rent and then eating into our surplus fund, which is a bad idea.
Okay. My other question was, I was not prepared to compare the leafback with the self-contained trailer. I was, I was kind of prepared to compare the leafback truck versus the current system that we're using now. So.
Well, so, we were, our task is what we felt was what was given to us was to look at a leafback option. We can discern about what they can talk about, what the pros and cons and what's going forward right now. With the system we have in place with the bagging and those, the roll carts will work. It is, it's going to be more painful for the residents, but it is, it does work. And we have seen success with it. Now, going into the leaf season, that is going to be the biggest transition and the truest kind of growing pain section. But ultimately, we did come up with a program because we do and we believe it will work and that's our condition going forward. A leafback system going forward would introduce actually a hybrid version of what we already introduced.
So, that would increase the tax, I mean, the residents too for some fees or?
We could potentially put this off for one year, but we would be, we would be, that would be sort of surplus.
Yeah. And they really, you know, if y'all look at it from years, Johnny, probably most in there are saying that is one very negative in sanitation, right? We've always been digging out that hole. It's never really made money. They don't really have a surplus anything each year, sorry, I can see. Y'all done a great job, okay? He's fantastic. They've done a great job adding money to it every year.
Giving it the blood.
Correct. Right. They've worked so hard at that. Right now, we did everything we could and, and they worked very hard on that budget, too, to try and make it break even, which we know with its finish was coming up at all. I was nervous that we only had 800 and something dollars and some change before we did the dollar suggestion.
Previous dollar, and that's still in the budget.
So, when we do the, sorry, I want to go outside. So, when we do the dollar fifty, that's still just trying to, I'm just planning to hopefully get us at zero and not be in the red for the year with the dollar fifty with this plan.
So, if you, piggybacking on what Pete said, if you were to set a leaf season and just go back to the way it used to be, not leaf season.
That's.
Would that be an option? Would, would the personnel and the equipment already be there?
No.
And would it be?
That's the issue we have. We had to move away from the, the current pickup with the current, what we have. That's why we moved to the value of leaves. We cannot keep up with the leaf season as it is currently. We'll just pick up loose leaves and also pick up everything else in addition to it. It does not work.
Right.
That's why we had to make this change because that's why we recommended and spent two and a half years sort of here and have reviewing and analyzing this to come up with a proposal.
So, Dan, when you say everything else, are we talking about brown woods as well?
Yes, yes, man, everything. So, you, we're going to go to the current yard waste ordinance in effect right now. With the value of leaves, we are able to maintain operations because a lot of things that we're talking about here, the reason why our sanitation plan is not, stay, stays relatively just close to line for revenues is because we don't charge for yard waste. We don't charge for recycling. Yard waste, yard waste is one of the biggest operations that we do, if not the biggest. So, that's where our fees are not aligned with the services we provide. And so, if we're going to go to, and I think it'd be helpful if we, if I move on to what the collection season would look like, to show you guys what we're proposing with this, so we can have a more rounded conversation. Because this is what we're proposing. We'll talk about the pros and cons in just a moment. But the ordinance change, again, we looked at other cities and what they're doing. Camden was actually a really good source for the information we have. I believe we looked at a few others.
York.
York. We looked at what other cities are doing to combat this with the leafback. And so, what we propose is a five months of the year going to a leaf lease, loose leaf collection schedule. This work, we will only pick up loose leaves and bulk pickup. So, roll carts will not be picked up because at this point you shouldn't be mowing your grass. Or if you are mowing your grass, you can put it into bags of leaves because you're just mowing the leaves of them. No roll carts be allowed. We'll schedule pickup weekly. But if it quickly goes down, which is a very real possibility with a leafback, as Camden does, allow eight to 10 days to first pick up because then we have to go back to the older pickup method and that cannot, would not be same day service. So, we would allow a window of time for us to get it in event of pickup loss. If equipment does fail, we need to find the residents either through a call from our system or a Facebook post. But we still would pick up bulk yard waste bi-weekly under the current ordinance. For the remainder of the year, so October 14th to March 16th, or March 16th to October 14th, rather, all loose debris would still be picked up, but only the ground roll carts in every household would have a roll cart. As going forward, that, we continue to invest with that. We would move away completely from bags in this operation. The roll carts would make more sense for us to pick up more efficiently. That's going to eliminate those smaller piles, which is what really was hurting us as well. Just a small pile of grass that was on the ground, needed to have the equipment pick up like the tank floor or the bucket truck, the bucket truck, the, no. We still would do scheduled pickup with the yard carts, but then we still would again do bulk yard debris pickups bi-weekly under this plan in addition to the ground kids that we picked up initially. The main thing here, and this is where we're, by getting into the loose leaf collection especially, we have to then enforce our yard waste ordinances that inhibit the contractors from picking up their stuff. Contractors under current ordinance are required to take their yard debris away. I'm talking specifically about certain areas of the city that have yard crews that come through and then put it out and incur personal pickup. We cannot do that continually. This will filter through into the system. Okay? So, we're going to have to strictly enforce that with fines. And I, and two of you guys know exactly what area I'm talking about. Okay? So, a lot of those yard crews are the ones complaining because they're having to, I accept it's more work for them. We should, we don't, we shouldn't be picking up because that's not what any city's doing.
See, that one, my concern, I say, well, you know, I'm looking at, say from March 16th, either one of them scheduled. What's the, that's tentative that you can do for someone who don't comply with either one of them?
So, municipal fines have a range that you go up to, but we could set any five within that range. City council.
Yeah. I was just, I got, if a crew come along and say they got a loose leaf, they see like branches in there, break, hey, just don't pick it up.
Right.
People complain, tell them why. I mean, you can't put art in place if you don't back it up or enforce it. Because I see a lot of artists around, artists have been working every day, but we never enforce them. Cars sitting in these yards for, for years, you don't go tag them.
We do enforce, so code enforcement is a mixed bag. We do enforce as best we can. I'll be very blunt with you guys. The issue that we have is that we do do that and when we get calls complaining, it's somehow mixed up to a council member or seller that we have to pick it up after we've backed. So, these, these things are already happening for not picking up debris that is co-megable, for instance.
Yeah.
And it's not working. It's, it doesn't work as, in reality. But we all, if we impose fines, it absolutely will start to get attention. But those fines have to be supported by you guys.
So, would there be savings? I'm looking at the leaf collections schedule, which is on five months. In my experience, you know, you could probably curtail that in January, October, January, there could be some savings there. And I don't know, other council members who break their own leaves deal, but mine are pretty much down by January 1st.
We came, we had a shorter timeframe in the beginning and I know we just want the five month proposal at this point because we want to ensure that we were trying to show the residents we were taking into full account the team season or what it is. We could go, we could do a shorter preseason, absolutely. But again, if you're using a piece of equipment like this, you're buying courses of purpose. You kind of want to get the most paid for, I guess.
So, when you move from weekly to bi-weekly, when the smoke clears as far as Phil's budget, we should be even Steven? I mean, he shouldn't, it shouldn't cost him anymore on his budget item or as far as the salaries or anything?
Oh, no, it's.
No, the only increase is going to be to, we were talking for this, is, is this increase? Everything else?
I'm talking about for him. I was.
Right.
Okay, for his department.
Oh, it's 45,000?
45,000 would be the increase.
The increase in cost.
In addition to the cost of the equipment to purchase outright.
Now, do we still have the truck that moves the trailer?
Yes, the.
Now, it wouldn't serve twofold?
It, we did talk about that. We could utilize, there are different trailer options that actually blow into a container. The issue we have with all this, and this is kind of when the pros and cons, class, the CBL classifications matter greatly. And actually, we've been having kind of a internal conversation on what that actually means. So, going over this, the leafback, basically the state law for Southern Carolina, if it's 26,000 pounds gross vehicle weight as a single unit, that's what requires a Class A CBL.
B.
Class B CBL, thank you. Yeah, it gets higher when you need Class A.
Yeah.
However, when you're dealing with trailers, and so, we're dealing with something that's going to weigh potentially 10,000 pounds or more, we believe, and we're going to get some clarification shots, that it could require up to Class A CBL. Those are hard to come by nowadays, especially with workers that are doing it. So, the trailer by itself, even though the trailer and like the dumpster combined, that might throw it over to that Class A.
If, if you pull it with the dump truck as an automatic Class A.
Yeah.
We're trying to determine whether if we go with the F-350 or the F-450, if that would require no CBL or if it would require an A because of the trailer weight. Because a 30-yard weighs 12,300 pounds.
So, that's six tons. And so, we're, we're in a different category. It's not a whole boat. So, so that's why, I, I think we're, we are leaning potentially more to the truck. Is that kind of fair? Full truck or it's kind of, it's a mixed bag either way. If you're going to go with something, the trailer, we have some concerns about how we'd be able to dump it because it does have a hydraulic dump, but taking that to landfill, we've had other things with landfill concerns. And then I don't want to have to dump it somewhere in the city and then have to touch it twice.
I'm playing.
So.
Does it compact it, too? Would it make it better when we got to the landfill, we have?
Yeah, mulch it. I mean, compact as much, they'll blow it into the actual container. But when it, the impellers mulch the leaves as they come in, I mean, it increases the capacity for the thing. The only other option was is you find farmers that'll take it for mulching for free, but that'll be a lot of leaves. I don't know if they get it with, with like handle, the volume of leaves we'll be putting on them four days a week.
And maintaining a mulching program is a separate, completely separate issue of ours. You have to remove the land space and then we have to continue to turn and also touch the car.
Now, don't we outsource when that truck comes through town and picks it up next to the curb?
The street sweeper?
Right.
We do have a contractor, a street sweeper.
Now, will, um, no chance of a leafback or?
I've already.
Twofold.
I got an email this morning that they, well, the street sweeper doesn't do that type of work, but I've contacted some sanitation people and they will not, they'll offer yard waste. They take over all sanitation, but they will not do yard waste. It's not a profitable venture.
What if the leafback will do what they doing though?
With the leafback, would we do away with it?
So, we can do away with that.
We would need to look into a completely separate vehicle for that. They do make street sweepers that will operate as a leafback now. That would have to be a completely separate conversation because that's a whole different ballgame because.
There is.
Street sweepers are not nearly as large.
But now, it's replaced the street sweeper.
That would, there could be potential, but that, it would be a whole different, that'd be a lot longer conversation. They do make street sweepers that operate as leafbacks, but now their capacity is much, much smaller. And then you would have to, I mean, it would be a twofold operation. You can't vacuum leaves and sweep at the same time.
No, but I meant whatever days we do downtown, continue to do it, but just do it with our equipment. No, but I mean, whatever days we do downtown, continue to do it, but just do it with our equipment. I'm just hoping it works too far. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
I mean, I think it's.
Yeah, okay.
That would be nice, because that would be my thought then.
Well, I miss, the, the street sweeper is a little more, it's designed to get around the curbs and whatnot. This is a different piece of equipment. It's not really designed. Now, if you get it straightaway very quickly, so for instance, like on my street, I know there's a certain section that is cluttered with leaves. And it's just leaves, wet leaves in there. There's potential to get that. I do get worried that there's something hidden in those leaves. I don't know. It's just, it's a completely different operation.
And I don't feel. That operates out of a different budget too. Our contracted street sweepers operate out of four, three.
Yeah, general fund.
So I was thinking of a transfer in my head when he's saying that immediately, right? Like I would have to do some background accounting to make that work. Uh, one thing I'll say is, I don't know if this was a really short window. He doesn't put much information. And that team has worked so hard, sitting together to try to figure out this plan and help us get there. One thing I thought was interesting, and this is where I think that enforcement, I thought was an interesting part of our discussion. Is, you know, we talked about Greenville a lot and how are they successful with it? And it's the enforcement. It's this, what we come back to, which Pete and you know, I know Teresa's talked about it before, and it is the enforcement of the fines and things like that. Because I couldn't, when they saw the information, when they talked with Henry, which is our mechanic, I remembered with Russ, the nightmare of the leaf back. And they came up with the thirty thousand. I said, gosh, it was that much? And we're like, yeah, this is the data that we're pulling, thirty thousand dollars for maintenance because of what they're putting in that pile. So the enforcement part, the part that I think too will be difficult for the staff are pretty labor intensive. It's how to figure out how are we gonna implement all the enforcement of it? This is what we're not continuing.
The component should require additional code.
Correct. I, I don't know how we would do that with our current staff to enforce this the proper way. I think too, the ones that have landscape crews, that's gonna be some tough conversations, but it's, it's for our ordinance and we, we haven't really.
And I've been on there for ten years.
Correct.
We just historically.
We have to figure out a way to track it.
Historically, it's been a, it's turned into a, obviously a political issue. And when you do go after it, then calls are made, so.
Yeah.
But in a perfect world, don't you think it would be up here caring and then once the word got out that fines, I mean, like I said, would you, would hope? That the households would get smaller and smaller and smaller as far as the ones that don't comply.
Right. And I think too, I felt like we even started to see that when they put this ordinance in place, right? Because how many in college did y'all say there was to start with? A hundred and fifty, right? And the other day, what was it down to?
Hundred and fifteen.
Hundred and fifteen, right? Because people are catching on to it. So, um, the only, there's a little bit of aggregation I have of all of it, which I talked about last week and on. One thing that I do think is, um, that the strain is will put on our staff. It is very tough to keep C D Ls. So I'm concerned about having a C D L driver for it. Um, that's a constant bad that we're facing there. Um, and just their recommendation around it and not going a full year. We haven't been in it a full year yet to see the growing pains of it. To see what would the ordinance look like in a loose, you know, the current ordinance, we haven't seen through a leaf season yet. You know, and may, maybe it wouldn't be that bad. Maybe it would be horrific and we're back to your next year trying to get us. That's the part that we haven't seen in a full year yet. So I don't know what leaf season would look like with the ordinance that we put in place.
We, all we have is basically we did, we started in January, so we had two good months of what it was compared to the year before and it wasn't improving.
Okay, just go back.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm just trying to figure this out. We haven't got to do it in one season yet.
We didn't about have to see it yet, is what we got. But again, it is on the tail end and I do admit that.
Yeah.
But compared to year over year, um, it was considered, what I would say, success. And we had less piles, less load yard waste, less time. And so the ordinance, the current ordinance was designed to solve our yard waste problems for the city going forward as a program. This is, this is an introduction of another change to the program. And I understand where you guys are coming from and what you guys wanna do, but this is what we recommend if you wanna do it.
So the brown cars, the res, the city, uh, pay for their costs, right?
Yes.
Have a certain form, the resident gotta pay for brown cars.
Yeah, well, if it's built in, then eventually you will pay for it through your pay, your, that's how the green roll card works. Again, we don't charge residents for yard waste, so there is no payment mechanism or pay the, pay us for the yard parts. We have discussed if you want an additional yard park, paying the full cost.
Yeah.
Which is around, what, sixty dollars or so, sixty-five?
Which is cheaper than.
How you can buy a load of it or something.
Okay. See, I'm, I'm, the issue I'm, I'm resting right now is, uh, I'm looking at the current process and this new proposed change to the ordinance.
Sure.
And, um, then there was no, they go in the budget to cover the costs.
Right.
So if people really want this, I don't see a problem. Okay, we gotta, I'll put it to the public on the board some kind of way. We gotta come to this couple of. If they want, if they really want this, certainly they should pay for it. Let them vote yes and no.
And give us some more, just like I agree with Johnny, six months, in my opinion, is too long. Or five months. I'd like, I'd like to see a smaller window. And put some of the owners back on our constituents. If you really want it, I mean, we're beating you halfway with it.
Sure.
But you're gonna have to do it this way.
And the other thing is, you mentioned the, um, yard professional services that leave inside the yard. I'm, I'm just curious, um, how many tickets have ever been written on this? Probably a few because it is in the ordinance and it's been there for ten years. The other thing is, if you, um, do a notification process first, you know, every yard service out there or every resident uses, you know, starting September first or whenever it is, you know, you, you know, we're gonna start enforcing this. So you, you're hauling away or you, you, I guess that's the only option that you are.
Absolutely. I think that comes in with that.
You know, and, and this is, this is the fine. And that gives them a little leeway to get, get it figured out. And unfortunately, you know, um, maybe those contracts, those, um, particular households would go up because they're not gonna do it the same because it's gonna be a, but it's a cost. Give them a little leeway to do that. And then if that does happen, we've got fewer leaves to pick up.
Sure.
We've got fewer stuff to pick up if they haul it away as part of the contract.
Daniel, we hadn't, we hadn't promised our constituents, I hadn't, any like a leaf back truck or a trailer or anything. We just told them we would explore.
Sure.
Yeah, kind of what we're doing.
Right.
So like the others have said, let's see what it's gonna cost, see what it's gonna cost them. Because even that night, we had several constituents that said, you know, bump it, bump our taxes or whatever, the water bill or whatever it's gotta be, two or three bucks. And all of them may not share the same sentiment, but I'm just saying, put a lot on us back on them. So, okay. We hadn't had a increase in a lot of property taxes or, or whatever.
Sure. It would be, it would be on this. So to answer a couple of your questions now, so enforcement, we would have to start writing tickets.
Absolutely.
And that would have to be, again, upheld by the entire city when you can kind of get behind that.
You know, like I said, I think a little, you know, you, you set a date and, and, and then you stick.
When we did the changes past time, we did, put it into the ordinance and did it to the literature going out that, um, yard crews we would not pick up. But it still is happening. Um, it's, it's a matter of, we were, our proposal was to actually request during business license season for them to actually give us, to put it to the ordinance and give us the households that you operate out of, a running list. Because right now, it's extremely difficult to prove who can, because again, we have to, it's only so much time in the day to do these things. Especially when our drivers are out and then our staff who are supposed to be the managers going out and managing this potential code enforcement are having to drive instead. So it's, it is a manpower and things issue. The cost you're talking about reducing to cost per labor, the only saves you're gonna see are, are gonna be in your temp costs.
It'd be about five hundred and fifty-two dollars for a month. For each month, it goes down to be about five hundred and fifty-two.
It goes down. The cost is still to get them on board and take care of it still. So we would see some savings there, but that is the true cost of what you're looking at. It's about, it's gonna be between forty and forty-five thousand dollars for a leaf back additional costs, which would require a dollar and fifty cent raise to pay to offset the cost. And then for the self-contained trailer, we're gonna need more labor because it does require you to move the post back and forth. And that is gonna, again, be around forty-five thousand or so dollars. So that is the cost. That is the cost that we're looking at in a short time. We have to work with these two options.
I'll, it'll be about twenty-two hundred dollars per month.
So if we took off a month to be.
I did about week.
I was gonna say.
It's okay. Um, so we're forty thousandish. We'll go with that. We took two months off. So that is the cost. That is what it would cost to do these things. If we want to add the effect, this is it. This is the cost that we'll take. And we would recommend you go to this in order to pick up the leaves effectively. For the citizens, for us, we would recommend you go for a loose leaf collection schedule if you want to go forward with this. Um, if you don't wanna go forward with it, you know, then those trucks might not be available. So we, we need a direction in here.
What, what concerns me is we're undoing what we just did to fix the yard waste collection program. If, if we move in this direction, we're quickly, it's not gonna go to other side of the program. So I felt like the point of the change we made was to save on cost so that the program could be sustainable. And this adds a ton of extra cost. And it's evident in having to increase the fee. That's the fee that everybody has to pay, not just a few people that, um, uh, voiced their concerns, um, about the program.
And the dollar fifty was just to hope that we would break even.
Yes.
I mean, that's, I mean, really to hopefully to keep us out of the red would probably be three dollars.
Yeah.
At least.
To sustain the program.
Um, the one that we looked at, that Jasty and all that, the joint work on Mother Day was probably closer to five dollars. I mean, that would.
That's like a yard waste fee. You put that along.
Yeah.
So even if we narrowed the window and bumped the buck and a half to three, because we want it to be a flat line. We don't want any department to go into red because of something we've decided that, you know.
That would be, if you increase the cost to three dollars, that's definitely moving in the right direction if you wanted to pose this condition on. It's, all you're saving on this is the maintenance still gonna be relative to same. It might go down a little bit plus operation times. But overall, when those things break, the, this is expensive, a piece of equipment that specializes. So when it goes down, the parts have to go down. That's just an estimate we could, these are budgetary numbers. It could be a lot less. It could be a lot more. Um, but we'd hope in the new truck that it would not be that thing, but sometimes these new trucks are just bad. But this, again, this is the cost, the only cost you really would save is really see significant cost savings in is personnel because we're gonna have to hire person. Um, and you would see some potential annual cost, but you're still adding in. And one dollar, we believe at around one thirty-one thousand dollars is what we're, because we have twenty-four thirty-eight customers.
Say twenty-six hundred customers.
And so you add a dollar and that's what you get for the twelve months, is twelve dollars additional for our customers.
Well, I'll be honest with you, uh, I don't have much faith in the residents doing the right thing with the leaves, man. I'd like to turn and see if this process, I'm like, I want to, I want to stay with that.
It, it does concern me that the leaf, the leaf back would go down every third collection. And it, you would constantly be in a state of confusion about when the, when the next leaf collection was gonna be. Because it was just every month, you know, we had eight, ten days, I will be there two weeks from now. No, eight to ten days again is.
And I don't, I'm not trying to paint a horse or speak out about leaf backs. This is just our experience in the office. It could stay up the entire season. It could go years without breaking. It could. We're just explaining, these are what we anticipate and what our knowledge is of what previously facts and also what other cities have dealt with. So that's just a concept here.
You know, I don't think you have a problem with the professional landscapers. It's, it's, there are lots of people you have a problem with.
That's true.
I've caught a lot in South Parkville. And I, I know, I give you example, one day on Howard Street. And I knew those people were lying to me because I drive up and down all the time. There was nothing across the street the day before. Uh, let's see, eighteen hours later, all this garbage was across the street and I went like, who put this in? No, I didn't know, but they're still moving crap. I caught seventy yards, so it's a lot of unlicensed people doing, doing the dumping.
Well, and we, during our, you know, we saw firsthand, you know, we're picking up piles of leaves, buried in piles of leaves, our giant glass bottles that, you know, will get picked up.
Yeah, and where the kids at a ranch.
And if, if clothing is in there, you know, clothing wraps around cords, you know, it is, this is a giant family that's sucking in this thing. They can destroy leaves very well, very efficiently. It just cannot chew up solid materials like that.
One of the things that we need to address is education needs.
Sure.
Because right now, um, I'm willing to bet you that every citizen says, well, I think that on my water bill because that's what I thought. But there is no sanitation, um, there is no yard debris fee on the water bill. Number one, that needs to be pointed out to the system. Number two, they have to know the ground rules. If they don't know the ground rules, we take the hit. Lay out the ground rules, just like playing a ball game. Let code enforcement do its thing. Because that's been our problem for twenty years and better now.
And I will say.
People are just not owning up to what they need to do. Landlords, you know, put people out and do all that stuff and, and it's, it's just, people will do what you're allowing them to do.
Absolutely. I think too, um, thankfully with technology automation has made it a lot easier for us. We've implemented, Greenville has done a phenomenal job implementing automated calls and such. Um, I know that some things that we've done for education, ways is a little labor intensive when they're having to go to every single door to do it. So how can we get the word out better about that? One thing I saw code enforcement has done recently is visiting them. I was like, this person's putting stuff here and I know it's illegal. And I'll tell you, since y'all put that sign out, whoever put it out, no one has put something there.
Yeah.
And I, I took, the other day I wrote, I was like, can you give me a look at the sign they put out? So, and it worked. So I think doing that, that education, who put that out? Was it yours? Your team?
It was a collaboration between me and the code enforcement.
I love that, but it's clearly said it's a yard sign of that this is an illegal dump inside. Call the person out. And I haven't seen it there since, right? So I thought something like that tool, because I ride by every day, is working. And what could we do from a?
Sometimes, sometimes we're saying encourage you to pick it up and say, oh, they're gonna pick it up soon.
Yeah. Oh, but it's weird though, because I haven't seen it there though since.
Well, it's depending on what part of town you're in.
Thank you.
It really is. Because you can put a, um, illegal dump inside and ask them if they put it there to come back and pick it up. That's what the sign actually says.
I think I have to put cameras out there to figure out.
There you go. So that was my next question, segue. How can our cameras?
Absolutely.
Help us with this type of problem that we have had for so long? Because people move in the night.
Sure.
They throw trash in the night. They, um, skip the landlord in the night. So all these things go on while everybody else is pretty right to sleep.
So ab- absolutely in areas where cameras are watching, but I, I will be very, you guys are talking about a lot of, a lot of labor and time to get this done. Uh, sanitation is not having a SWAT unit or a, you know, a quick response unit. It doesn't have a licensing board. These are, these are problems that the cities face across the state, across the country. The only ones that really work are the ones that pay again for additional code enforcement. And if you want to go that route, if you wanna use Greenville as the benchmark, we have to pay for it. And that's the only real playground. Now, what we're suggesting is try to keep these costs low. That was the goal of the yard waste conversation to begin with, was to keep the cost low for the entire city, not just the few residents who complain.
Right.
If I could, Scott brings up a couple of ideas. One is, um, are we using all the tools in our toolbox? And I like the illegal dump inside. I like things like that. You know, um, so often we have so much, so many resources that are maybe cost efficient that we're not using with the city staff. You know, even in our P R things and everything, there are, you know, lots of things we could be doing, QR codes and things like that to bring additional, uh, low-cost, you know, awareness to problem. You know, we can put that on, on water bills or whatever. Um, the other thing is that I want us to become big brother.
Sure.
Attracting people, you know, littering, um, with, you know, A I technology, uh, camera systems. I, I don't think we need to go there. Um, I do wanna commend the staff for short notice finding these numbers. I'm sure there's a lot of unintended consequences with everything that we do. I do think, um, if we've had something on the books for ten or fifteen years we're not enforcing it, then that's an issue. That's an issue, you know, uh, the, any type of, uh, talking about the, um, professional yard people that continually to put things out on the street to be picked up. And I would challenge the city staff to find out how many times we've actually charged anybody with that.
Well, and Johnny, I think, you know, and then ratios change and focus has changed. And so when some things, you know, different areas of concern are addressed, different, you know, different people come on board. We are definitely initiative in maintaining, do what I think we put a strong emphasis on codes. Um, you can only catch so much, uh, for instance, it's illegal to speed. We write tickets quite often and people still speed. Um, we can only catch as much as we can catch. And again, that's the, the point is that we try and, but your argument is valid about tickets being written. I mean, in the history, for City View Street, I wrote the one and only planning zoning violation ticket in the history of the city. It was thirty years old. And they don't typically, these things are not enforced or they're not, they don't get to the court side of it. They get to a warning. So there are many warnings that are being given out and the work, the tools are being used. Just when you have to take someone to court for a process to municipal judge, the worst thing that happens is a judge will approach you. And now you have a, you really do have no key to your.
Well, I'm, I'm a great believer in nudging. If you nudge people, well, you know.
You nudge a lot.
And, and, um, this could certainly be you, an example of nudging people to do the right thing. You know, you, you've got that stick way down the road.
Sure.
But you've also got a carrot that you can use also. Um, I think we, we several times with the, the ordinance, um, we mentioned maybe from this venue and maybe from that venue, that this year will be a year of transition.
Right.
And, and we said that, you know, we've got, uh, green bags available and things like that. But we also, I do also remember, and Bob remembers this, you know, promising some of these people we would look into it. You know, and, uh, this is part of the process, looking into it. Um, you know, I don't know what the right answer is. I do think it's gonna hit the fan in least certain season. You know, it, it really is, just speaking from experience. And, um, you know, I, I think council probably needs to go over record. Maybe at our next meeting next week, up or down, and then, you know, people will know where we stand. And that's hopefully and as a body.
And that's all we really, we just need the direction here. We can, we can go in a direction you said. I just said, we'll go in a direction you guys tell us to.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, I would dovetail on what you said, Johnny, 'cause I was one of the ones that have, uh, the district where people are most local. And we promised them we would look into this, council. That's what we've done. I think after listening to all of your comments, that, that the best course of action for now would be to continue the path we're on. Let's get through this first transitional season and come back and address this and, and over time, maybe with different data points, we ask for this to be rushed through. And it's good stuff, and I like the idea that if we're gonna do it, we have two different ways of picking up the leaves. I think that makes complete sense. But as you just said, Councilman Andrews, use the tools in our bag now. Let's, let's do what we can there, what we already have. And, um, we will face a firestorm in the fall. We know that, and it's just, that's gonna be part of it. If, if y'all vote, and we vote not to move forward, I would want to be as nimble as we can. I guess that's where I'm, I'm standing. I've come a little bit around on the circles that I stand.
I agree.
Let it go its course, let it run full time on that one. Then evaluate all the pain points that came up on that one, how bad it really does get in the fall the next winter. And then we can all just come back and address this very good, very good time.
Because the success rate is really, even the people who still kind of catch me at church or the grocery store, whatever, I will tell them, I said, you'll be alarmed at the success rate we've had with. So, it's working. We, I would agree with the mayor, we don't wanna go backwards. But it just like, and I'm just gonna use the lady on Home Avenue. Seventy years old, pick up fifty bags, and I know that may be the exception to the rule, and who knows? That could've been two years of leaves. I don't know. But I'm just saying, but now Johnny has told me that he can work in his yard every week and get more than a roll cart full, you know? So, we're kinda caught between the rock and the hard place, but I think we've got some good information. But I'll agree with McGee, let's don't jump if, if we're on the right path, just because we've had a few to bark. Let's try to, well, we'll have to have tough skin with the heavy leaf season, but we'll push through somehow. And hopefully some of our constituents will say, you know what, we gotta put them in bags and rather than put fifty at one time, I'd rather try to halfway keep up with it, with my yard. So, um, I'll agree with Bobby. I'm in full agreement. Let's push through this first season, see where we come out with it. And, um, and we'll revisit if that's what we have to do.
I hadn't seen one system that has been successful containing Mother Nature. We had this conversation that we've known the fate of.
Yeah.
Let's be real.
But what do you feel like?
Containing Mother Nature, show me one system that has successfully done it all the way around. It didn't want.
Okay.
We do. We, we do, we're starting, we, we don't have the number to say it doesn't work. We don't have the number to say it doesn't. We need a conversation to do in the face. Let's try, let's try.
So, Brian, I'm gonna ask you directly. Would you move forward with the ordinance that we have in place and let it play out before we get any of this?
I agree. 'Cause I, I'd like to see our performance go up later.
I would as well.
I, I don't have a leg to stand.
So you're on board with pushing through?
Yeah.
Okay? I mean, I know Strope, or Daniel, others have asked us for some direction, and that's what we wanna try to give them.
And I don't think this, this is the most important issue in the city. I do think it's one of the most local, uh, issues in the city. And that's the, um, the disconnect, I guess.
Pe- people would like to see streetscape improvement before they'd like to see us stand three hundred thousand dollars on a truck personally. That's my personal thing, but.
And it's bad to make this big of a decision off the voices of a few when they had a complaint, they came, and then after they came and they did it, they kind of, you know, okay, well, it's not so bad. So, I, I, I would opt to continue what we're doing. Be able to do that for a season and see what it yields. I know these numbers won't be the same, um, when we go through that, you know, after, after today.
Right.
We don't make that se- decision, and, and next week, we don't make that decision. But we have to have the ability to see what the change that we did yields during its heaviest season.
True.
And being able to keep up with everything else that we have to do, maintenance wise, sanitation wise, all of that.
Well, just to react, we have, um, I believe at this point, we have, we will have almost more brown roll carts out than recycling has. Uh, which has kind of sat stable itself. Um, but we will continue to offer bags, which have been successful, uh, the bags handing out. Uh, we are, have, we do have more money in the budget, I believe, to buy some more brown roll carts, again, to continue that operation. Uh, to Johnny's point, if you can't fit in one, I believe we should start looking into getting out more than one and having to pay for it, developing a fee structure that comes with that. So if you wanna buy a roll cart, although we do have some residents that have bought their own roll carts, and because of the system, we've been able to pick those up ourselves anyway. So if people wanna do that themselves, that has worked.
I have one resident who would have purchased five additional rolls.
And I think that's a good model citizen that can tell a story others will pick up.
I'm not sure if they may not use a yard curb, but I'm like, get to that right.
But that's, that's how we did with our, um, our green roll carts. We had, when we had yellow bags, you had renters that would put a dollar and seventy-five cent bag on the, um, trash can. They just tied on there and filled it with all kind of garbage, and they go and borrow, you know, and they have three or four, and how long is it gonna have one? Well, I said, well, we probably gotta stop that. So if you want two trash cans, that's at least half price for that second. And so that, we implemented that program, you know, you remember, right, you'll remember. And, and that's what we have in place now. If you, you, you pay for one, if you want another, you gotta pay at least half price for that second. Um, I can't say what the cost would be here, but the additional, whether you buy your own or you get it from the city, I, I think it'll work.
Well, everybody's kind of said their piece. Do you have the direction you need at the end of that?
We will maintain, we have this plan in our, kind of in our back pocket, we have it. Um, we will be anticipating, I think, just at least discussion in next year's, just a budget conversation.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe a street plan session, but, uh, we do, that, our recommendation to people to give them would be to continue on pulling out. But, I understand the pressure you guys are facing, but I do agree, we need more data. Um, and I think that we might surprise ourselves on how well we'll do. So I think it might be better to keep positive outlook on that side. Um, so I do have a version, I need to say.
Data might be something for those quarterly manager conversations that you're gonna have?
Sure, that'd be fun.
Kind of delegate that.
I love the numbers.
Okay.
Uh, I do just have a couple of other things, just to, to talk about the draft budget update. Um, this is just kind of a thing, it's kind of what we're, we're screwing your systems again. Uh, as you guys have done, we've had quite a slew of recent posts about the city, um, stating on some numbers which actually are quite, uh, incorrect. Um, and so, when we're discussing budgetary numbers and whatnot, and for it to be misrepresented by, uh, the public, and then used to kind of harm the reputation of the city and city staff, I think that's inappropriate. Um, there are quite a few things that need to help, that you guys can help us with, with help. We are doing as much as we can to continue it, but we are staff members. Our jobs do work, it's the one city management. We're not really gonna get into a debate of the process.
Right.
Um, but the numbers that are being put out are not correct. And, uh, it's just, it doesn't do anything but hurt the people involved and people trying to do their jobs. Uh, so I would really.
It hurts the city as a whole.
It hurts the city as a whole, and it's creating a false narrative, and I'm not sure quite what the angle is, but there is one that obviously is here. There's some angle that's being happened here. Uh, it's still yet to be said out loud, but I know it's there. Um, but I am, we're, I believe the staff and I would request that we have your guys' assistance to help me combat that. Um, anytime you guys can counter something, if you have any question about the budget, what the real numbers are. For instance, business license is not really substantial decline, which is just a silly, silly statement. Um, if that fits an area that helps somebody get ahead.
Right.
It doesn't help the city. The city's doing well. Um, you can't say, for instance, the Chamber of Commerce was just, you know, said how much success it was, how great of a year it's had. And you can't have the Chamber doing well and the city not doing well at the same time. It doesn't work. The numbers don't work. Uh, so I think that's very fair to say that you're, we're all here to do a job, we're all on the same team. We need your help, which we could get it. Um, so just putting it out there. And for the record, I do not make what Greenville City Manager makes, and to compare ourselves to the law with the yard waste.
It is, um.
Go ahead.
It, it, um, it is difficult, you know, we talked about this before, that the best asset, asset that we have is our staff, right, is our people. And when I'm getting messages of people saying, can I please respond? This is just so much for.
Staff members.
Staff members. It is getting hard to combat, right? And we're saying, just let it be, let it be, but it's, it's untrue, right? Um, that, that part has been extremely difficult for us, and today's title was very tough, when it said council will sleep at the wheel. It's, it's rude to y'all as well, and it's very harsh for us. We respect all of y'all. And so it's very difficult to see this. We're trying to do the best we can. I would commend Michelle and her team, and we all work together. I think, I don't know if I saw the traction of our page, but they've done a great job highlighting what we're really about, and we'll continue to do that. But anytime y'all can, please send them to my office. I, I'm very honest and ethical, and I would love to sit down. I love numbers. People pick on me. I talk about numbers all day. So if y'all send them my way, I'll be glad to have meetings and with Daniel to, of course.
Our pleasure is to book.
I'll be glad to be with anybody that wants to see the city's concern or search.
I got it. So, you said, how can we help? You said, you need I go counsel.
Well, that's, I mean, and I, I, I can't make that determination for you guys. I will say that, um, city staff is relatively voiceless in this, in this conversation, because we have jobs that we're trying to help the families that we're trying to protect. So it's very difficult, and so, for instance, I would not permit my staff to go out there and bash the system. I would not let that happen, and I will not let it happen. That's why anyone that's commented on saying, I want to respond on behalf of the city or me.
Well, okay, let, let me say this. I almost responded to one of them. And I'll be honest with you, I'm a straight up guy. I'm like this, you mouth all you want on social media, you got facts, you bring your butt right here to say it in front of everyone.
Well, fact, and we will, listen, if there is something happening in this city that is illegal, corrupt, or unethical, we would be the first ones to let you guys know, because that is not how we operate here. If any type of concern, legitimate concern about the city, we would love to hear it, we wanna talk about it. We don't do things perfectly. We're people. If something is going on that's bad, we will fix it. We work together to get it done. We cannot stand to have lies told. That's what's happened. Lies are being told. And at this point, it does not feel like it's being done in a way that it's just because they don't understand it. It seems very intentional, the lies.
I think part of it, and this is probably, you know, a thirty thousand, a thirty thousand foot viewpoint, is the demise of a local newspaper. And I know people younger than me don't look in the paper, but you still, you should have editorial, you could have letters to the editor, you know. You know, you, you would be accountable for what you say, there's a positive back and forth. And I think studies have shown that as local media disappears.
Sure.
Social media becomes the newspaper, and anybody can post anything. And, uh, continue to push, and, and, and I know, you know, of a city of less than eight thousand, the city's website and the city's social media cannot take the place of a local newspaper. Well, we've got a lot of things we can do. We've got a rec department. Everybody wants to see their kid or their grandchild playing this sport or that sport. We've got multiple proclamations. We can highlight not just the mayor's picture giving the proclamation, but something about that, um, you know, that cause or that week or that month or whatever. We've got, uh, like History Month, we could do a ton there. We've got about our heritage days, we could do a ton there. We've got Women's History Month, we've got a ton there. We can see, we can get involved. We've got so many positive things that are human interest that people can't possibly be against.
Sure.
You know, we used to have an employee every month and, you know, tell that story, you know, things that are positive. And if you, and, and it, it won't counter every little nick that we get. But if, if we're the positive force there, you know, I think it goes a long way. And then it goes visibility and, and, and all of that, you know, you can, and, and I'm repeating, you know, if somebody's got an issue, I think we are pretty open to counsel to hearing.
They got a right to voice their opinion, stick to the facts.
You know.
Absolutely. You have a right to voice your opinion on a right.
But, but I, I know there are limited numbers of people, and I'm, um, time we've got, and if an issue comes up, you've got to jump on that. I realize all that a hundred percent, but we could bank things up. You know, bank things up, release one a week or whatever.
Absolutely.
And, and, uh, yeah, it's good news, you know, it's, it's not all Paul Harvey, but it, it's good news that we.
They don't know who Paul Harvey is.
Nobody knows.
Still.
Everyone is not, but just to let you guys know, that is the exact thing that we have been doing. We have been accentuating the positive, because that's what, that's the vibe that we have going on right now. We all have been accentuating the positive. But it goes to this ability, respect, and solution. If you're not gonna be a part of the solution, then I suggest you hold your beat. If you have a fact that you wanna come and discuss with council, there's a table right there, there's a microphone, open at all times. You got a deadline, when to sign up. But to have character assassination, that's, you, 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 that, whoever the person that does that, they're setting themselves up. Because you can't, we're elected officials. So, we have some protections that staff does not have. But we can't let people attack our staff or us, because what we're doing is all public. And you should not come to a public meeting and because you didn't get your way, go out and spread lies. And you should not come to a public meeting and because you didn't get your way, go out and spread lies. That's the truth of the matter. So I I would suggest, because I'm not gonna get on Facebook and go back and forth with anybody, but I will say in this open mic. If you have something that you want to challenge, there's the desk right there. And we work as a body, that's our staff, all of these are our staff, we're the council and we are the leaders.
And I, I, you uh, Karen, you said something about how we shouldn't be attacked either. I'll volunteer. If somebody wants to talk trash about me, they go ahead and do it. But um unfortunately, that's part of what I signed up for. Uh but like you said, you guys and staff, if you're you're here to do a job and uh to be attacked and defamed personally is um shameful. So um like like you said, if they really got something to say, there's your, there's your forum.
Yeah.
But if you're not gonna show up and you just want to talk trash, then it needs to be sent my way.
And I'll admit, I'm the the Luddite on the group here. I don't do social media.
I don't either.
And and I am unaware of all the positive things the city puts out there. And I purposely sell my wife, don't let me know anything. Really, really serious. You know, and she don't, she can chew bites by that. And so what I pick up is from second and third hand stuff. So I don't do the day to day and and I sleep better than I.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have, you know, we have to, we are part of social media.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
So it is, but again, it's it's the main thing and I thank you guys for your comments. Um the main thing and the main concern, I I myself, I have a, you know, I'm a city manager, I have a contract. I am, I do expect a certain level of scrutiny and I welcome them, absolutely, please don't. Uh I, but I cannot say it's my staff being targeted. That's just inappropriate, completely inappropriate. Their services to do their job and they helped you with exceptional job duty, every single one of them. And for them to be defamed like that, it's just incorporeal. It's not okay. And it should not be accepted. So I appreciate your comments very much. Um I would, like I said, Pete, if you have a question, if you want to put something out, just give me a call. But I, you guys can say whatever you want to say, you guys are public officials.
You just may not recommend it.
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily recommend it, but.
Maybe.
At a certain point, um when lies are being said and then other cities are calling us and saying, what is going on? What did, what did you do to this person? Like, oh, I just did my job. So um it's just, I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
I I may be one of the people that responds too much, but it's funny that the people that talk on social media bypass your public, they wanna shake your hand and smile. It is what it is. The the energy that they get, that you will accept, is what they will give you. I just refused to accept it and they try. And they avoid it. But I'm there, I don't mind texting the people and saying, hey, you didn't have a conversation with me? And it never happened, sadly. So you know, it's political movement, but we give those people the correct energy, certain things will succeed.
Mayor, can we come back to the one thing that would affect the budget? Now, I guess I'll I'll have to put out almost a disclaimer on this, but you guys will remember this. First, I'll apologize to you for not getting back really soon. Uh probably most of you do not know that our son was involved in a traffic, a traffic accident last week. He was almost killed. And so I intended to come back, but I told y'all in the sessions, you guys were bringing this up. And with the comments that you just made, you will know because I told you this, that it has nothing to do with the citizens who are dead as to common things now. What he said, you'll know, this has been on my heart for a couple of years. And I'll apologize to to you upfront, because this is pointed not to trying to, trying to keep all emotions out of it. If you were in the budget session that we had a couple of years ago, um there was a heated session. And the city manager came to us and said he wanted an assistant city manager position. And because the sole justification was he was wanting to be doing economic development, he needed someone to help out. I questioned it at that time and I question it even more now, a couple of years later. Um the city hasn't grown population wise. I've got some road books I scratched out this morning. We still have the same number of departments. We have very capable department heads. And I don't find anything in the city manager's chart description that says that we're a training session for city manager. I don't see that in there. Previous city managers um have not had an assistant nor have they requested one. And council's primary responsibility is to pass a budget that does the very best utilization of the taxpayer dollars. Remember, they're all taxpayer dollars. That's how, that's how, nothing happens without taxpayers getting the bill and paying back. So we have to do the best possible allocation we can. So today, what I'm requesting of staff is that they furnish to the full council the total cost of the assistant city manager position across all departments. Each line item and each process associated there. And I think the staff could easily get that to us today or certainly not tomorrow, because y'all know where all the line items are. And then once council knows the true cost of this position, you men and women may have a better idea of where those resources could be utilized. Or something could benefit all of the city. It might be another police or fire. Or it could be something like what we just talked about here, an expenditure you need to make coming out of this department, you know, and save something else where money can be reallocated. So Daniel, that's what I'm asking of you today, please, is that you will furnish staff the full accounting of all of the associated costs in your department. That goes into finance where we pay for our salary, the travel, the benefits, everything else. Give council those numbers so that we see and know what they are so that the council can make an intelligent decision. As to whether or not, A, they would like to abolish the city manager position as a council vote.
B, abolish the city manager position?
Assistant city manager.
Sure.
Abolish the assistant city manager position if they so choose and then to reallocate those assets, um resources across over time. May I sponsor? Of course you have boys, but no, but sure.
I I'd like to respond.
Go ahead, face the place.
Before our current city manager, before you came on council body, this is my pen here as a person says, council member. Unfortunately, we had so many things go on. We had no choice and picking a city manager, we had, there were just things that go, went on that we had no idea what was going on. It was presented to us in one way and then acted upon another way, a bait and switch. We never, you talk about the um assistant city manager. We had a person in, and I guess it's official assistant manager position. It was said that we come as a package and you weren't here. But these things did happen. The full council now is more abreast of everything that goes on than we have been in the last ten years since I was here. Because once I came back here, I thought things, you know, would be different and I didn't know what was going on. When I got back here, I, you know, I was completely left out. I made a suggestion, let's have the citizens agenda because you remember, council meetings were just being steamrolled along, boom, 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 boom. And I said, no, that that's too fast. I'm trying to tell you, that's too fast. That does not give the council a chance to think, a chance to do anything. You down, down and go on to the next step. Like I said, the um agenda for the uh people that attend council, that was my idea. So that we can be forthcoming and let citizens know what we're doing. And right now, um I I just feel like the city manager and the assistant city manager, I think they're doing a good job. I think we have to wait on the yield of the fruits in that situation as well.
Appreciate your comments. As you said, I was not here then, but I was here when this was proposed. And as soon as Daniel said he was gonna be out doing economic development, what I said was, Tony's gonna do that and run the city too. He was still pretty new to us. And economic development is different than retail development. Getting a Jersey Mike's or a biscuit barrel is retail development. Economic development, for the most part, within the city, is us making this city as little as it can be by improving our parks, improving our recreation, improving the livability. So that businesses want to come here and relocate and be able to be, like, the quality of life as good as it can possibly be. That's economic development.
That's what's on your head here. Well, this is the thing.
That's the definition of all the past things.
This this is on the agenda.
But the tales of two cities is, the tales of two cities is on the agenda. And we opted to be one heart still. We opted to be one heart still. And that is finally happening after volunteering for so, so many years. It's finally happening. It's on the horizon. I see it. We're at the cusp. We're right there and and to do anything, others can go forward and run.
It's not happening because of the assistance city manager. You can't have it, no disrespect.
It's not?
No, it's not. It's not. You're you're the one who's happened to be in the position. That's what I said. I apologize.
Can you please not address my staff right now, please? You're gonna talk to me about this, okay? Please.
On the way, let's let's um.
We're gonna talk.
Continue. This will be talking close to me so we can get what we need to know.
Mr. Mayor, I do need to say something.
Go ahead, you're talking.
Um so a couple of things. Mr. Reese, you're absolutely correct. Previous city manager did have an assistant city manager. She was most successful in her role. Um so it's quite interesting, these comments, very, very interesting to me because. Bobby, I do have to ask you, you're not the one who suggested hiring Russ Latton as my assistant city manager?
No, I said he would have been a good candidate for.
Oh, no. Oh, no, Bobby.
Yes.
Even who else? Delcanton, how many times did you push and try to push through to hire him as assistant city manager? How many times?
I didn't push anyone, David.
Really?
No, you're talking about one email, one reason.
I'm just talking about emails, sir. But it's hilarious to me that as soon as Russ Latton is out of the situation, and no disrespect to Russ at all, as soon as that situation suddenly is different. Um I do have concern because this is exactly some conversations, it seems to be the same type of conversations being posted online.
But I have absolutely nothing to do with it.
I don't live for an instant, but that's okay. Um the main thing here is that this is a personal decision. If you guys don't want to fund an assistant city manager, which increases the budget to a total of ten thousand dollars. Because she's our C E O, which is our chief financial officer, accountant, somebody actually understands accounting. Uh she actually helps with developing the budget. So the assistant city manager is part of now. Again, your retail conversation for economic development, that again is straight out of the mouth of someone who's been posting recently. So I can't decide whose tone, who's station.
I'm arguing engagement with the.
Very interesting.
Go back to the interesting.
But the point is, is that the assistant city manager has these assistants who's meaning to help you run the town. I challenge you guys, what exactly is not happening here, other than your canal project? That's not happening here, that's not showing success to grow the city, the hearts of it. What exactly do you want this role to be? That's what we're talking about in my evaluation. What do you want this role to be? What do you want economic development to be? Your definition is your opinion, sir. And it's also opinion of someone else who's posting a creep that's online.
No.
And so the, I'm not done, excuse me. And so the point is, is that the economic development role of the city is to increase retail growth and sort of improve the build of our city. That extra money that's going in is extra for the sponsors, is extra for the farmers, is extra for things like that. So I appreciate your comments. I think they're completely unjustified and this is a personnel conversation.
Thank you.
Not a discussion happening in the public. But since you did that so rudely, I will happily say to those here, you have been completely dishonest with us about this process and continue to leak information. That will lead to just going out there to the public. So thank you for that. We appreciate you letting us know that this happened. But the bottom line is that this is a personnel conversation, not we had an open public like this. A budgetary number, if you choose not to fund it, then I would be taking ten thousand dollars out of that budget line and I can figure out what we need to do with that later on. This is not a conversation about what to have moving a department.
And we we actually have quite a cost savings without, when we hired it internally. I was concerned as well that if we would have been, it's it's certain for the assistant city manager, which was in there, it was a discussion way before I had ever applied for it. It was already in the budget.
So if I hired Russ Latton, as you so put, that would be a budget uh mission. So that's all my comments I have for this time. This time, what we do to have a serious conversation afterwards.
Yeah.
I believe it's gonna require personnel here that have a conversation about some serious things that have the city council this moment.
Yeah, there is not, not be any more discussion of this topic in the public forum. This is a personnel issue and it's a personal issue, not really. Um does anyone else have any comment about the topics listed on the agenda? Hearing none, ladies and gentlemen, stand your ground.